I'll call the budget meeting for March 2nd to order. Just a note to the audience, we're going to make masks optional. You're welcome to wear them if you desire, but please feel free. Ms. Branch, if you could roll, please.
Here.
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 Mr. Chair, anybody that goes to the courts now, they lifted the mask also in the courts today, so.
I try my best to stay away from that place.
Well, you gotta go wear a land racket. You don't have to be an hour.
And while I'm thinking about it, happy birthday Sheriff Walton. Thirty-nine again?
That was twenty.
Okay, we have an amended agenda this evening. Couple of changes in yellow. Anyone have any questions, comments? Otherwise, if I could entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
Moved and properly second, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Hi. Okay, budget work session matters. Outside organization requests. First up is Mr. Tom Shepley, Director of the Monkey Regional Library. Oh, sir, come on.
Good evening. I'm Tom Shepley, I'm the Director of the Library. I've been with the library for about thirteen years right now. I'd like to point out Mary Shippman, who is King William resident and your appointee to the Monkey Regional Library Board of Trustees. I am here, I'm really talking off of the budget that we budget information that we presented as part of our request. This is the largest request, increased request that we have asked for in the thirteen years that I've been at the library. I will say that a couple of things helped maybe make it not quite so big of a surprise. We had a flat budget last year. We explained that in our budget request, that although it was flat, our expenses were increasing and that, you know, we would need to come back to you for that. And we also have been asking for benchmarking funding for probably the last four years since about 2019. We have found that our salaries are not comparing well with with other public libraries, that we kind of compete for staffing and really just the market in general. We, we have a hundred of one hundred and forty people that are under the $12 minimum wage. Yeah. The, the great resignation, as they have been calling it, that kind of started with us when we went to reopen. We closed briefly in 2020, we went to reopen in July of 2020. And at that point, I think one of the reasons that we've had a harder time holding on folks, we've got, we had sixty-five percent of our staff that were over the age of sixty. They're part-time jobs that aren't, they haven't paid a lot, they're not a lot of hours, and there aren't that many people kind of that can, can do that kind of work, and we found it harder and harder. When we went to reopen, we, we had a number of people who had just sort of sat at home, they were comfortable doing that. We had to call people back, or we went and had staff to reopen, and we ended up with forty-five vacancies in July of 2020. So this is kind of an ongoing challenge for us. And the biggest part of our increase is in wages, salaries for our staff. Where we've updated our comp plan, had to do that like on an annual basis as we, we moved through. And what we really found is that we were planning ahead for the $15 an hour minimum wage. But when we got to looking at that and we compared it to our benchmarking information, that was really where we need to be today. And as is the budget request process, we're telling you what our needs are today, not, not being five years behind with, with what we do looking ahead. So there's part of that is towards the minimum wage, there is merit that we're planning to do. And then, you know, if you have a hundred people at, you know, $12 an hour, there's compression, so you have to have some funding to do that. And then we've got some other changes, like FICA VRS insurance costs that are going up as well. And then we also, library does have a reserve fund, we also get some income from that in better years. But that went from $50,000 to nothing on us. The, the way that the funds are invested, and they're invested with Hanovers Treasure. We're not getting that income. And state aid has also gone down for us. So those, those kind of balance things out. The service area pieces that we asked for funding, you may know that we have hotspots for the public. They are very popular, they basically stay out a hundred percent of the time. One comes in and a customer checks it out. We, we have $46,000 in our budget to help pay for those. And we also ask for material for our books and materials, which are also on an increasing trend. Our, our circuit's been going up around, you know, nine to ten percent per year. It did dip, you know, naturally when we were closed at the early part of the pandemic. But as we've come back, it, it has also come back with us. Which is kind of interesting because people are not visiting the library, but they're using our books and materials more. I don't know if they're using them online more, or if they are just visiting less frequently and checking out more when they're there. But that is a measure that is, you know, kind of a juxtaposition. So that's a pretty quick overview of our budget requests. I'd like to answer any questions you might have.
So from King William County, you're asking for fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty addition increase.
Our increase is one hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-one from King William.
I misunderstood in your little notes over here.
Four forty-four, five ninety-three.
Yeah.
What is it?
Four hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-seven, five hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred and sixty.
But then I read over here, it says ten percent of total funding.
Well, right, but yeah, that's still the contribution, the total contribution they're asking from us is the five ninety-three, right? Which constitutes ten percent of our operating budget.
Is that based on usage or population, or what's it based on?
There are sort of two legs to the library. We share many services, like there's one library director. We have our IT staff that work and provide all of the IT. We provide all of the computers out of the shared budget and all of the materials. We do delivery, all those kinds of things. That's part of the shared budget, that is divided on a per capita basis. And then, like in Hanover, they have six branches. So they pay to have six branches open, and you have two branches, you pay to have those two open.
One's a brand new in Rutland.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now that I understand you. Five hundred and ninety-three thousand, does that include North and West Point?
Upper King William and West Point, yes.
But.
Both of those branches are included in that.
So was that any funding from West Point, or all this is, do they contribute anything?
They own the building. They maintain the building, they provide utilities to the building. That is, that's theirs.
They used to pay for, for cleaning.
They do that too, sorry. So I kind of have a scorecard and I didn't have it with me.
So the building up this end of the county, I guess, are y'all paying the rent on it?
Rent is part of that budget.
It's part of it.
Yeah. And we, as it is now, like we, we have a custodian there, it's the library employees, we have, I mean, we have to clean it.
Has that increased also, the, the rent that you're paying?
It has not increased for quite a few years.
I was told somewhere around twenty-four thousand a year rent, does that sound right, two thousand a month, or is it more or less?
I believe it's twenty-five hundred a month. And then we pay utilities and such on top maintenance.
In the past, we had talked about maybe looking at our own building, but I don't know if that'd be cost effective, I guess it would depend on if we got it dominated by somebody, or would that help any or not really?
So I, I have other rental facilities, and they've been in Hanover. And the way that that has worked for the library has been that the, the rent contribution, if you will, that has stayed with the library when the county has built a new building like they did in Rutland. So that helps our budget, and they use their capital program to pay for the building.
If you've got something free, it would be thirty grand.
So in so many words, if we had a physical building, we wouldn't save the, the rent fee that you are now paying?
Well, we, I mean, you'd have to make that decision with everything, but yeah, I, I don't know that, like, if you're building a building, I don't know that what you're paying in rent would offset your bond payment or mortgage payment.
So with, with the salary adjustments you're talking about, you, you mentioned a minimum wage boost, compression relief and some merit, do you also have just an annual increase in there as well, or are you just focusing on those areas?
Um, yeah. I'm not sure that I understand an annual.
Just in across the board, are you doing like an across the board three, four, five percent for, for all employees, or are you just?
Merit, merit would be what we would call that, yeah. People who are, who score, you know, meeting their expectations for their performance evaluation would be eligible for that. If you don't meet it, you wouldn't get that merit based.
In that question, then, what's the highest?
Sorry.
In that same question, what would be the highest merit increase?
With, this is budgeted at two percent. And typically, if like at two, it's, it's usually a fifty percent more if you're an exceptional, so in that case it'd be three.
What are the hours at King William? The days and hours?
We're open fifty-four hours a week, I believe. It might be fifty-two. We are open six days a week, Monday through Saturday. It's I think it's ten to eight, Monday through Friday, ten to six on Monday through Thursday, pardon me, ten to six on Friday, and
That's okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think ten to two on.
You host several groups in your meeting room, I, I know for sure.
Yeah.
What would be the impact of closing an additional day, is it, is it significant, is it noise?
I think, I mean, I think your customers will find it significant. The, we have found over the years, and, and we've had to cut hours from branches, what we find is that most of the customers don't shift their usage and, and come another day. We, we have a hard time retaining customers for that. We've, I've seen that in Goochland, I've seen that in King and Queen. I would expect it to be the same here, and it takes a lot of hours to cut, to make a substantial dip in budget.
Probably worth asking, because it is, it is a big ask, obviously. What, what would be the impact to you guys' operation if we couldn't fund either all or, or some of this request?
I know that Hanover is funding most of our requests, not all of it, but most of it. And they are funding the, the major part of the salary piece. And they are close to seventy percent of the operation on the budget. I know that Goochland is providing a significant portion of it. I don't know what they're gonna do in King and Queen, they told all of the outside agencies, and I think their inside agencies, that they were not entertaining increases. But impact would be if, if the library board chooses to move forward with those, and they have, you know, quite a bit of the money to be able to do that, our only option would be to be able to close branches so that our expenditures would meet what money we have.
When you say Hanover's doing some, not all, have they actually given you guys a proposal of what?
It's in the county administrator's proposed budget.
Okay, so we can represent, to see what, what they're picking up, okay. Yeah, obviously, there's a need, but we want to, you know, there's a lot of need.
There's a lot of needs, yes, sir.
So, yeah, no, we, I, I certainly, I appreciate the job you guys do, and you know, especially for us in, in West Point, and then they'll do a great job on three sixty as well, so I would say that I think certainly we would want to do as, as much as we can while trying to balance the other needs that we have.
And we can dial things in a little bit as the process proceeds.
Do you have a question, gentlemen?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Gillian Barney with Thrive Virginia via Zoom.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Gillian Barney, and I am the CEO of Thrive Virginia. As King William County's Community Action Agency, we are currently providing four critical programs to county residents. Emergency financial assistance, feeding children during extended breaks from school, housing and financial counseling, and domestic and sexual violence intervention and prevention services. In fiscal year twenty-one, Thrive Virginia provided fifty-one thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars in emergency financial assistance to King William County residents. And we provided free meals to two hundred children through our extended breaks from school feeding program. In the past two fiscal years, we have enrolled four hundred and seventy-five county residents in our programs and invested approximately four hundred thousand in, in the county through our program delivery expenses. A few examples of critical services we provide are adult financial literacy, healthy relationship classes in schools, crisis response to survivors of domestic and sexual violence, rent and utility arrears, financial assistance, and food distribution. Thrive Virginia can provide our programs and services free of charge because we receive multiple federal and state grants that require matching dollars. A contribution of $5,000 from King William County will allow our organization to continue to provide these services free of charge and meet these match requirements. We look forward to continuing to provide quality services to the residents of King William County for many years to come. I thank you for your time this evening and for your kind consideration of our request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions, sorry.
You threw me off a little bit, I've, I've looked down at my notes, it's Quinn Rivers, it used to be.
Yes, yes, sir, we changed her name a few years ago. We're still Quinn Rivers doing business as Thrive Virginia.
Anyone else? Well, thank you.
Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Now, Ms. Ellen Davis with Arts Alive via Zoom. Ms. Branch, she's still muted, is she, is it your command or hers?
She's talking, but.
Am I unmuted?
We've got to know.
There you go.
You muted you.
Am I unmuted, am I unmuted, Judge?
Yes. I don't think she can hear us.
Can she hear us? Ms. Davis, you're muted again. There you go, one more time.
She just can't hear us.
Can you hear me?
No.
I am.
Technical difficulties.
I'm, I'm getting a message that I can't unmute, how can I do that?
We can hear you now, can you hear us?
Do we happen to have her phone number handy?
I thought I did, I don't, I don't have it there.
I keep getting a message to unmute, and I'm clicking on it, I'm so sorry, I don't know what's going on.
Chris, he's telling us, it was her presentation, even though we, she can't hear us. Okay.
Can we put a note in front of the screen?
And I click on that.
We've got you now, can you hear us? I don't understand.
Travis, do you have any idea?
It doesn't. Right.
Okay, we're, we're gonna go ahead and move on.
Yeah, somebody, yeah.
We just won't be able to ask any questions.
This chair is already starting along, it's up to you.
Now, I've got, I've got Donna Klein's number, I'll have Ellen's number.
She can't read, I got her right back.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, you can? Okay. Thank you. I am so sorry, I'm not sure what was happening. I'm, I'm not, I know you have a packed agenda, so if you can hear me, I'm not going to take a lot of your time. I just, on behalf of Arts Alive, we want to thank you for all the support you have given us in the past and tell you that we finally after COVID are back and working hard to, to get everything back to normal. We had seven, seven concerts, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, and thirty-four percent of the people that came from those concerts were from King William. We had our Arts Alive camp, which, oh my gosh, you cannot imagine how excited these children and parents were that they were coming back to camp. And thirty-six percent of the folks that came back to camp from King William. Our drama camp, Missoula, which was held in August, which was full, we had to unfortunately turn people away. And fifty-four percent of the folks that came there were from King William. So we are so thankful for your support in the past, and we are coming again to ask you to support us in the future. You know that every, whatever you give us is matched by the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts, which is, again, taxpayer money, but the money you give us is matched, so if you give us forty-five hundred, we get forty-five hundred from there. And one of the most important things that we try to do at Arts Alive is to keep what we charge to folks in our, in our counties, something that they can afford, that folks, kids that have never been to camp before can come, that folks that maybe haven't been to performing arts can come. And the reason that we are able to do that is because of what you give to us, so thank you for your past support, we're asking for your support again. Again, I'm sorry, it was so hard for me to get on, and I hope you've heard this, and if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Can you hear us, okay? So can, okay. Well, no, I, I just, I was one of those people from King William who had a child in, in two of their camps this year. Juliana did the ukulele, and she did the Missoula Drama Camp that she mentioned as well, and she, she did have a great time, she's the little lobster second from the left in the pack.
She said that they match with the VMFA, but.
That doesn't add up.
They're asking for.
Ninety-five hundred, but they only get none if we match forty-five hundred. So shouldn't it be forty-seven, don't they?
Well, they're asking for ninety-five hundred, I'm surprised.
No, we only play half.
Okay. But forty-five hundred is not half of ninety-five hundred, so that's why I'm confused too.
Right, well, you can see the amounts unchanged from the year previous.
That's true too.
I thought it was even.
Excellent, I can't remember exactly how that match worked, but it's, it's a state grant match, if we don't fund it, and the state doesn't fund it by that same amount, so.
I believe they're also starting to work with our parks and recs to bring entertainment up to this end of the county, or further west of the counties. Anybody? Okay.
Good. And we suggest that, we're two years ago, and oh, yeah. And they're working for us. No. It's, it's a good program, it, be honest, it allows you to go to shows, and many times these folks, after they appear here, you can't afford them at their next concert. You know, not necessarily because they were here, but they've become that great that it becomes too expensive bringing them back, and the tickets anywhere else would be outrageous.
Understand, just, I have issues with taxpayer funding this program, but it's important. Any other questions, comments? Okay, moving on, we have the Regional Animal Shelter, Ms. Lori Betts.
I'm just gonna quickly summarize for Lori, so she doesn't have to go line by line. Regional Animal Shelter has requested an increase of sixty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-four. An additional full-time employee has been requested that generates an increase of roughly forty thousand five hundred for salary and benefits. Ten thousand dollars has been requested for repairs and maintenance to replace discolored flooring. Additional funding has been requested to assist in the new home ward trail program. And Lori was gonna go ahead and talk to you more about that new program tonight, too.
Just to remind everyone that this is a department who, the department and the services that we provide are shared with King and Queen County. So the sixty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-four that was requested, we were actually asking King and Queen County for half of that. So thirty-one thousand eighty-seven dollars from each county. Natasha mentioned that ten thousand dollars of that request is to replace soiled carpets and bathroom floors that are sticky and discolored with a linoleum product that can be sanitized daily. And so we are asking King and Queen to fund that as well. An additional five hundred dollars is requested for an increase in the cost of cremation services. I just wanted to talk a little bit about our programming. The shelter has added many programs that serve our community since our inception in two thousand nine. We have facilitated, facilitated a monthly low-cost spay neuter clinic for owned pets in our community for twelve years. Developed a PALS adoption program which matches senior pets with senior citizens. Developed a working whiskers adoption program placing less social cats in barn or warehouse settings. And we have a humane education program for the schools and homeschools, homeschool groups, scout troops, and daycares. homeschool groups, scout troops, and daycares. Two years ago, we established a community pet food pantry to help keep pets with their owners while they were dealing with financial hardships due to COVID. We've expanded our services to the community without a staff increase since two thousand eleven. We are requesting to expand our programs in FY twenty-three to include a community cats program and a foster care program. Both designed to reduce our intake and to save more animal lives, which is what our community wants. And to get our live release rate closer to the nationwide benchmark of ninety percent. In calendar year two thousand twenty-one, we handled four hundred and seven cats, surpassing the number of dogs cared for by a hundred and twenty-five. The cost for the care and euthanasia of one cat is a hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents. A hundred and forty-one cats were euthanized in two thousand twenty-one at a cost of fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-four cents. We have the unique opportunity to receive a grant from the nonprofit organization Homer Trails who will bring financial resources for the sterilization and vaccination of community cats as well as in-kind donations of equipment, supplies, and volunteer assistance. They will also provide support for a foster care program. Our community members want a humane solution to the cat overpopulation problems. This will serve the community and work to bring the community together over cat problems. These proposed programs are supported by the sheriffs of both counties. With current staffing at the current level, we cannot take on these two new programs. In addition to one full-time position at a base salary of twenty-seven one sixteen, of one hundred sixteen, the other increases in the budget are directly related to the new programs such as twenty-one hundred dollar increase for gasoline, nine hundred dollar increase in vehicle maintenance, six hundred dollar increase for cell phone service so we can communicate while we're in the field, and fourteen hundred dollars to procure necessary equipment. Alice Burton from the group Homer Trails is here this evening to give a brief overview of a community cats program and the positive results that can be realized. Her PowerPoint is in your hand as well.
Good evening. My name is Alice Burton and I work for Homer Trails Rescue out in Northern Virginia. For fifteen years, I was chief of animal control in Arlington, Virginia. I know Arlington is, not, not, there aren't many similarities to King Williams. But I will say this, people are people everywhere you go. They're the same. They want what they want. And I think that, you may agree that, especially Arlington, Virginia. It was only twenty-six square miles, but we had two hundred twenty-four thousand people to handle all these cases for animal control. It was myself as chief and two deputies. And two thousand nine, our shelter where we worked out of, Animal Welfare League of Arlington decided to do a trap neuter return program for cats. And I was completely against it. I thought it was inhumane. I couldn't understand how it worked and I literally was, just, I wanted no parts of it. Fortunately, they didn't listen to me and they went ahead and started it. Six months later, I saw the positive effects in the community. I saw the money that was being saved and I saw the folks who were even complaining about cats. The nuisance cat complaints, they began to plummet. And some of this stuff is in the PowerPoint, and I know I was allotted twenty minutes, but I think that you got, you always appreciate if I could bring that down, bring that time down a little bit, because I know you have a packed agenda. But two thousand nine, when we started the trap neuter return program, we had nine hundred and thirteen, nine hundred and fourteen nuisance cat complaints. Jump ahead to two thousand fifteen, we had forty-seven. I mean, that's a huge decrease and it allowed myself and my officers to really concentrate on the problems that were out there. So, so that's my background. And now I work for Homer Trails. What we're doing is we're coming in to King William because of Lori's expertise. We came in, we interviewed nine shelters to partner with, with two, with two openings. And Lori was just absolutely incredible. And we saw what she was doing. We saw her experience. And her staff is just as dedicated. So we have the backing of a national organization also, best friends, and they're putting money towards this program. And it doesn't, we're not going to ask you for money. This is the money that she's asking for is for the position at the shelter. We're coming in on April third and we're going to go ahead and spay neuter fifty cats. And that's our expense. We're doing this to kick off this program for trap neuter return. The other programs we're gonna help is with fostering. We're gonna help her increase adoptions. More spay neuter for, for the dogs and cats that folks have in their house. The trap neuter return, which I'll discuss in just a second, and managed intake. I met with Sheriff Walton yesterday and he's fully supportive of this because I explained how much it'll take off of his two ACOs, the animal control officers. And I'm sorry, Sheriff Walton, I didn't know today was your birthday, so I'll catch up to you. But as Lori had told you, it was, it's almost a hundred and five dollars to take a cat in, hold it, and euthanize it. You can spay and neuter that same animal for approximately fifty dollars. And it has a health check. It's healthy. We want, we make sure that they're healthy. So for twenty-four thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, the last two years, that's what you spent on euthanizing cats. Half of that money could have been used for spay neuter. So, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the PowerPoint and we'll try to get through that as quickly as possible. Then if you have any questions, that would be great. So we're gonna talk about what is a community cat, understanding TNR and how humane deterrents work. So a community cat is all the cats that are living outside. The, the community is literally taking care of them. You may hear the term feral cat. That's a level of socialization. So a, a community cat may be friendly, but it just isn't the right, the right level of socialization to be placed in a home. They may have problems later where they may not use the litter box or have that fight or flight kind of mentality. Some are referred to as barn cats, dog cats, and tom cats. Community cats in the shelter, they don't belong there. I, I don't know anybody that goes into the shelter and asks to adopt this cat right here. They're not gonna do it. And there'd be, if they're being taken care of and they're healthy, let's leave them in the community where the caregivers are taking care of them. And trap neuter return also gives us the opportunity to build the relationships with the caregivers to make sure they're doing it correctly. Should you try to socialize? I don't know how long it would take to socialize this guy here, but he's better off there. Okay. Thanks, Chris. Why trapping and euthanizing doesn't work? And like I put here, if it worked, we wouldn't be discussing it. This has been done for years and years in all different kind of localities. Even in Arlington, we got to the point where something had to be done. We were spending too much money euthanizing and people were still complaining because the cats were out there. It's inhumane. It's not efficient. And you're not gonna get volunteers to go out and trap cats just to euthanize them. But once you start a community cat program, the trap neuter return, you're gonna get volunteers. You're gonna get folks who buy into this. And they will help you with this. And they're gonna raise money to help with this. It's costly, like I said, a hundred and five dollars, close to a hundred and five dollars for each cat. And it's dangerous. These, the, the staff have to hold these animals for a certain amount of time. So what is trap neuter return? A cat is spayed or neutered, vaccinated, its left ear's ear tip, and returned to their outdoor home. That's, that's really important that they're being vaccinated against rabies. And best practice is that, that should keep occurring. They should be retrapped to make sure that the rabies vaccine stays current. We went over this a couple times. The cost, the house feed, Medicaid, if necessary, is a hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents. Why are the communities embracing trap neuter return? It's good practice. The public, again, will support this. They don't want you euthanizing the cats. It addresses nuisance complaints. Right now, the only way we're addressing nuisance complaints is by trapping one, two cats at a time, and it's not taking care of the situation. With trap neuter return, you go in and you get all the cats spayed and neutered. It immediately modifies their behavior. These folks, these folks, these cats are literally going into retirement as soon as they get spayed and neutered. They become lazy. They're not fighting anymore trying to take over the territory. And they're not looking for dates every single day of the year. They don't, they don't want that. And it saves taxpayer money. So the cost of TNR, again, it's trap neuter return. It's not release. It's returning them to their outdoor home. Spay and neuter, left ear tip, rabies vaccination. And also a veterinarian and their staff is looking over that cat to make sure it is healthy. They're looking to see if maybe there's hidden signs of a disease, if they have to do blood work, they will. If they have to treat for flea and ticks, all that for approximately fifty dollars. And this fifty dollars already researched. That's what the vet clinics around here, it's an average, will do. So you can see Arlington, Virginia, again, only twenty-six square miles with a lot of people in those twenty-six square miles. The complaints went from nine hundred thirteen to forty-seven. And right now, they have a hard time actually finding cats to trap. That's how well it's done. In the third year that we were doing trap neuter return, we were having a hard time finding bottle babies. The localities that are not doing trap neuter return right now, those that are doing trap neuter return are taking their bottle babies. And that's an expense. And that's one of the things that we want to do is set up a bottle baby foster program here. And we'll get the supplies. You get that online. You get folks to donate it. And it's a great program. We'll have professionals come in and train everyone. But the cat, total cat intake went from twelve seventy-six to eight hundred eighty-four. That's not a huge decrease, but out of those eight hundred eighty-four cats, two-thirds of those cats were brought into Arlington from other shelters. The reason why is because we didn't have the stray cats running around anymore. We didn't have the owner surrenders anymore. We needed cats to be able to adopt out. That's a classic problem to have and we were happy to have it. Chris? So this is another important thing. And as a former animal control officer, this is probably my favorite slide. The best practices for colony care. You, you hear complaints, sometimes the colonies are not being kept up. It's not clean. This is a great way to build relationships with the colonies and the caregivers there. You make sure that they're keeping the area clean. You set up programs where they get shelters. The shelters for the cats are literally made out of the rubber-made storage containers and straw. It's always straw and it's insulated. If you're feeding the cats at the front of the property, put it in the back. It's not just to keep them out of, out of sight so folks don't have to watch this, but it's also to protect the cats. You don't want anybody to harm them. You provide outdoor litter boxes if they're going into the neighbor's property. And you give the cats somewhere to feel safe. And you set up a feeding schedule so that they show up, literally lined up at that one particular time or, or two times a day to get fed. And you communicate with your neighbors. You talk to them. And these are all the things that we tell the caregivers. You talk to your neighbors and if there's a problem, they reach out to them. And this was, when we started the TNR program in Arlington, the caregivers, of course, they hated us because we were trapping and euthanizing. And once we started this, they realized that we were helping them and we cleaned up colonies. It was amazing. Chris? So these are some humane deterrents that we offer the citizens out there. The citrus, just the peels alone, from the oranges, lemons, limes, put that in the mulch. It keeps them away. It also keeps raccoons away. The scarecrow, top right, that is a motion-activated sprinkler. A lot of times, not to say that the cats are always innocent, but a lot of times they're getting, they're getting blamed for going into the mulch. And a lot of times that is actually raccoons digging for grubs. But if the, the cats are going in there, using it as a bathroom, this helps. The trash cans, always put bungee cords on them. And then my favorite that I actually use a lot is the used coffee grounds. If you go into McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks, they have bags and bags of that. They, they, they save it for the folks who have gardens. And when we work with a community, we have the animal control officers hold that in their truck. And if they have any problems, they'll give it out to folks. Again, this is, I can't even tell you how great of a program this is. I've traveled all over the country setting these programs up. And I think that, I think King William, I think you would get a lot of support. So, any questions?
The fifty-dollar fee, that includes a spay, neuter, and a medical exam also?
Yes, sir.
If they find something medically wrong with that cat, do they then still, I guess they have to still euthanize?
The vet would make that decision. If it's something that they feel the, the cat would not survive the surgery, then they may opt to euthanize. But they would never return a sick or injured cat without spaying and neutering.
This is, this is for Lori. King and Queen, have they agreed on the cost share for the additional employee?
I have no word on that. Mr. Ashcraft has been talking with the county administrator.
I know I'd heard something about, we were asking them to partner with a way to separate the sick animals, you know, from the healthy ones inside the shelter. And they, they didn't, they didn't want to step up to the plate.
The sick room?
Yeah.
Addition? I, I haven't had any conversation with King and Queen about that.
We've had one preliminary conversation, members of the board, and they, King and Queen is level funding most of their outside agencies, if not all of them. I don't see any support for this program in this budget year. Now, the sick room, we are talking to them. We have, we want to include that in a future capital program, project, and I will be getting with them later on.
So, maybe I misunderstood. King and Queen is not gonna support us with this program?
I mean, we didn't get anything in writing, a definitive no, but I know in the conversations that I've had with the county administrator, they are level funding their, their outside organizations. Would they consider this, as we do, outside of organizations?
It would seem that if we hire an additional employee to take care of this program, that they would, I guess they don't have to agree to pay.
They don't have to agree. It's in, it's in. It's in, it's in the agreement that this body or even them, they can, they can fund at any level that you, that you desire. They don't have to match in order for something to happen.
Just a gut feel, huh? What is the percentage of King and Queen clients versus King William clients? Just a gut feel, if you don't have actual statistics.
You know the population difference.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the, the King William Animal Control only works three days a week, where King William is on, you know, five days a week. And then they pick up certain calls on weekends as well. So there's, there's a big difference in, you know, our population compared to theirs and how they handle animal control as to how just people do. You know, the King, King and Queen Animal Control Officer could go out tomorrow and set traps and bring in 60 cats. You know, or they might not bring in any for four months. We just have no way of knowing. They are pretty much reactive. You know, they respond to complaints only. They're not very proactive.
So the logistics of setting this TNR program up, if you do get a, a surge, is it all set up to be able to handle that kind of thing?
Yes, because it would be managed. It would be a, like she said, uh, we, we would work with the individual that has the colony problem. And most of these people are caretakers, and they've been caretakers for years and years, even though they might say, it's a stray cat. Well, why are all the goo bowls out here and you're feeding them twice a day? So you have to go out and meet the people, assess the situation, tell them what this program will do for them as far as lowering the population. People that live in these rural communities, they like to have cats around. They like to have them in their garage, around their barns, their gardens. They deter rodents, they deter snakes. They even deter animals that might try to break into chicken coops. So they, they want to have cats around, but this problem of overpopulation, because cats are so prolific, and they don't know how to get ahead of it. The cats have to be trapped because you can't pick them up and put them in the car and drive them to the vet. They're, they're animals that, that have to be handled carefully. And having this program where the people could contact a shelter rep or animal control officers could refer a situation to the shelter rep. And then we actually go out and work with the people. No, they're not all picked up and spayed and neutered that day because there will be planned clinics where we might be able to have $50 on a day. So we would work with identified individuals that, that need the service.
Um, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add really quickly that, um, you know, when I said that we were coming in to help, I, I meant that. I, I spoke, we met with both sheriffs and deputy chiefs yesterday from both counties and told them that this is something that, you know, speaking with people who, because there are going to be folks who are upset that they're not just taking the cats. And that was something that I told them that I have years of experience speaking with these individuals or the types of individuals, and I can help them with that. So, and they were, both sheriffs were very supportive of this. Unfortunately, they're not in charge of finances, but they, they really were very supportive and they understood how it would help their efforts.
So this program, both counties have to participate actively, or can King William just do it? I know.
Well, the problem with that is that we're a regional shelter. We serve both communities. And, you know, King William could fund it, but we have to offer the service to King and Queen as well because our community's not going to understand that.
Yeah.
You know, they're used to us providing services for everything else. Well, you know, I can come and get cat food to feed the cat from you, but you won't help me trap neuter and return them because I live across the river. It just, it's, it's hard to understand that.
It's not fair. It's not fair to tax figure over here.
I.
No.
So it, the ability to operate this program is a contingent on being able to get this new position?
Yes, well, our plate is overflowing. We are, we are stretched with what we're already doing every day. We can do this with a full-time position. There's going to be a lot of field time involved and a lot of coordination with individual caregivers, trapping cats, taking them to the clinic, returning them to their caregivers, um, and providing additional support.
Anyone else?
What capacity are you at now on all animals right now? Or you, I know at times you've had the clubs that were correct.
With large animal seizures that come in through animal control. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what causes that because we have to hold them for court.
Without getting too graphic, what is the actual euthanasia process? An animal's determined to be too ill or too mean?
You mean as far as the decision-making?
Well, the process. Do you do it or does a vet do it? How is it disposed of, et cetera?
We have trained euthanasia technicians at the shelter.
Okay.
And, um, once the decision is made to euthanize an animal, which is typically, you know, due to behavior with a cat. You saw the picture, nobody wants to adopt that kitty that you can't touch. Um, and there's nowhere to put them. I mean, we could send it to the vet and have it neutered and toss it out the back door, but it needs a caregiver. And that's the big thing about this program is these cats that are out there already have a home. They have caregivers. They know that's where they live. They know where to shelter. They know how to hunt. They know that the dinner bell's going to ring every night. Once they hit the shelter, there's, there's no way out except euthanasia. We use a tranquilizer. And once the animal is sedated, then, uh, we give an injection. And then, of course, the animal's cremated.
Cremated, okay.
Have you had an opportunity to present this to King and Queen yet?
Only Mr. Swartzwelder, by way of a Zoom call. And he did not hear from Alice. He just heard from me.
Um, I think we've got more work to do on that. And I suppose, as we kind of just have, we want to do this. But yeah, so I wanted to know. My, my question's not been answered, and I appreciate the presentation to pass that program.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate.
I'm a cat person, by the way, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I have one question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We were saying that's half, about half as much to your program versus the euthanasia. How much do you think that would save? I mean, we could use that amount to maybe offset part of that position. Do you know about how much it might save in a year?
I mean, in 2021, it was over $14,000 to euthanize cats.
So it might be seven.
I mean, we're not going to see.
That's what I was thinking.
We're not going to see a result in one or two years.
Oh, yeah, no.
We've got to stop the cycle.
It would help in the long run. And that, you could take that off of it, yes. That would only be like maybe 23 or so.
And it's not just that number that we need to look at. We also need to look at, uh, the number of cats. What was it, 143?
141.
141. How many of those were female and are also adding to the population with kittens that are coming in? I mean, it really is. It's just, it's just a snowball effect. When you have a cat that is not altered. Um, and again, you know, they, you know, we, we were looking for bottle babies in Arlington. And now they've set up a program, the Kitten College, they call it, in Arlington, Virginia, where they pull in thousands of bottle babies a year from other localities. And they have this network of hundreds and hundreds of fosters. So it's, and that's, it's a great fundraising tool. And, and it's humane. It's just a wonderful thing to do.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the overview.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Next up, outside consultants and contractors, I guess, Ms. Durland, that's your.
Yes, the county administrator had just asked me to provide this to the board. Included in tonight's information is a complete, a compiled listing of current consultants and contractors for additional information regarding department requests that are, we're going to be talking about later tonight. And that's, do you have any questions regarding that?
Lawn care is, I think, one of the bigger expenditures. Has that, is that a yearly contract? Has it been?
It's yearly. We're actually getting other quotes on it this year because it's at that time period. Although we do, he hasn't gone up much in price. I feel like it's been pretty affordable for us.
I assume fuel is going to hit him.
So he's got a, he's got an escalator in there if fuel goes up.
Is that agreement just for the, uh, grass cutting? Or is it also flower beds, you know, like entering the courthouse?
That price is for, uh, grass cutting, trimming, all your lawn care. But there is, if we want it to, if it's spread out whole somewhere, that, that would be a small fee just for the one time or something.
And they do not take care of the shrubbery that, no, no, they are not doing any shrub trimming.
County maintenance did that at one time, didn't they?
They still do.
They don't? Okay.
You have a total, by the way? Top, top, you had.
No, I don't know. I do not.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Okay. Next up, Ms. McIntyre with benefits overview. And some decreases, I see.
A few. The biggest one being Anthem. I think I might have mentioned that last meeting. It's decreasing by 1% overall. That's always a good news when health insurance is such a large portion of our budget. Um, I won't have that breakout yet. They just opened a little portal today for me to go into it at like four o'clock. So, uh, I can have an update on those rates, how it breaks out between the county and the employee, probably at the next meeting. The loader rates look to be going down, um, for 23 and 24 because VRS sets all their rates in two-year increments. So this is our two-year increment. Group life insurance that we pay for the employees through VRS, that's remaining unchanged at 1.34%. The disability that we pay for the hybrid employees, that's only increasing 0.02%. So that's good news as well. However, the VRS contribution rate overall for the employees' pension funds is increasing from eight to 9.97%.
Now, what's the impact of that? Because I know that a small increase in that number can mean a big bottom line.
The thing about all these numbers, as you noticed, you got an updated sheet today. And I received these numbers this afternoon. So Natasha has not had a chance to fill in everyone's updated cost yet on that since we just received these.
Standby for the shock factor.
Well, right. And I know, well, the VRS number is one that you always kind of watch because again, that, that, what looks like a miniscule, a 1.97% increase, you gotta remember that's.
Because the previous ones, it was a projection of less than 1%.
Less than 1%. And I guess maybe the other localities received that less than 1%, but we did not. So like I said, we just received those today. Our Versa, our insurance provider for risk management, our buildings, our vehicles, cyber insurance, they're projecting a 6% increase this year over the previous year. And our short-term and long-term disability that we pay for our employees who are Plan One, Plan Two, and hazardous duty employees, uh, remains unchanged. That's a two-year guarantee as well that they provided me at $1.96 for short term and 42 cents per hundred for long term. Got any questions on those?
Ms. Ashcraft, if Ms. McIntyre gets that data, can she just push it up through you?
Sure, absolutely.
The health insurance?
Yeah, before our next meeting.
And VRS, yeah.
Great. Annual leave payout.
So this is just a new idea that we would like, the staff would like to present to you, a recommendation to allow employees who, and this is mostly employees who have been here for quite some time, who have accumulated a lot of annual leave. If they have more than 100 hours of annual leave and they have met the conditions such as using at least 40 hours of that leave in the previous year, that they could request a payout. As you probably remember from last year's budget, every year we have to include what that leave payout would be for every employee for every hour that's on the books as part of our.
And that, that money is set aside in the event?
It's, it's at least known. I don't know that it's necessarily, it is, okay.
This is a rollover. If, if it's not used, it does roll over to.
Yes, there, there's a maximum that employees can accrue depending on their level of service.
Yeah.
But this would allow employees to, to request to have a payout of 40 hours if they're not going to use that time. You know, there's several employees who have been here for quite a while that have accrued quite a bit of leave that that would give them a chance to slowly take it as opposed to
All at once.
us having to pay it all out when they retire or when they leave. And it also gives the other employees who might have something come up that they need to cash out 40 hours of leave for, um, if they meet all the criteria. So it's just an idea to kind of get you thinking on it.
Is there a, a maximum limit that an employee could take in a period of time?
40 hours per year.
Per year.
So once, once a year, they would get to request that.
Okay. Any questions?
No, no questions. Yeah, I'd like to see, um, again, maybe talk with finance about the impacts and if we have that, that funding set aside.
We've kind of done an exercise. I don't think we're quite ready to roll that out to you. We want to put the idea first, but we've got an idea of what that would call.
Okay.
Natasha's so efficient.
Well, then, yeah, any questions?
Anyone? Down the same?
Okay.
And salary comparison?
Um, at the last meeting, I believe, and if I have interpreted your request incorrectly, let me know. But provided for you is a comparison of the chief debt, the chief deputy commissioner, the deputy commissioners, the deputy treasurers, what their scales are, what their pay bands are, based on the compensation study that was approved and completed in 2020. How many years of service they all have is on there as well. In 2020, the comp and class study that we passed, the chief deputy commissioner received a $2,100 increase to meet the minimum of the new pay band that that position was elevated to from the previous pay band that it had been in. Um, and you also requested the number of employees who've been here over 20, have over 20 years of service with the county. There are seven employees. Uh, one of them is an elected official. There are four employees in the sheriff's office, one in the building department, one in the commissioner's office, and one in BJ triple CA, who all have over 20 years of service. And the employees who received an increase due to the new pay bands when we did pass the comp study in 2020, there were a total of 26 employees who were elevated to a new pay band and received a total of 54,000 in salary increases to bring them to the minimum of their new scale.
Anything, Natasha? So you're contemplating something, yes.
So of those that were brought up to the minimum, uh, it's probably in here somewhere. But, uh, the commissioner's office and the treasurer's office, were they included to be brought up to the minimum? Or are they, they're over?
The commissioner's office had the chief deputy, the pay ban changed for that position. And so that position was brought up, um, to reach the minimum of the new pay ban. There was no one at the time in the treasurers or, no, I'm sorry. There was one person in the treasurer's office, and that was the chief deputy at that time. It is on page 12 of the comp and class study, all the people that received those minimum increases to bring them to the new ban.
Would you please dummy it down for me on the comparison to other localities? The 60%, 66, 32%? Page 62.
I honestly don't remember what that was at that time. Can you remember that? Where we had the locality, the other comparison?
Yes. At the top, there's.
Right.
King William, 60%.
Was that the difference? Was it the difference between the bottom and the top of the scale?
It, it looks like it's saying how the band.
And I, I believe, if I remember correctly, that was the difference between the minimum and the maximum in the bands. Cause previously our bands were very small. We didn't have a large range. So we tried to take, we had a ton of bands that were very small, but this time we tried to have fewer bands with a larger width to allow for longevity and relieve that compression.
Okay. Anything else?
I, I think the one thing that's maybe missing here out of what I, what I was looking for, maybe it's a, a task that is, is not easily done or maybe impossible to do. But one of the reasons that we talked about this was because of what, um, you know, the constitutional officers are, are proposing in their offices. And we discussed maybe trying to find comparisons on our side in duties or something like that.
I, I mean, it's, it's really hard to compare with, it, it, they're obviously different departments because they do different things. So it's hard to draw a parallel between this person's position and this person's position when they touch completely different parts of the county's setup.
Well, right, and I need to re, refamiliarize myself with that document. Obviously, a lot has happened since then. And so while I'm, I'm sure I was well versed in it at the time, less so now. So I'm sure that work's done inside of that as well. So we'll spend some time with it.
But yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I thought about trying to put together a comparison, but just the, the specifics of each person's job are so varied. I couldn't imagine walking into the commissioner, the treasurer's office and knowing what they do versus what we do in the finance officer with the planning department does.
So that would be, those comparisons would be starting on, I guess, page fifty.
So.
The, uh, classification.
Yeah, on, on thirty-five is where the classification and pay ban started, and that's how at the time we had placed the different positions.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, like I said, I'll spend some time in that. Sure.
And I'm happy to answer.
Comparative work is probably already done. And if I have any questions for you or Natasha, I'll.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I got one more.
Oh.
Sorry. Um, the sheriff and fire department. Um, y'all had also requested, uh, kind of a line-by-line comparison. So there are two pages to this. Um, there are all the positions and the pay bands, the salary ranges and the current salary of each position in the sheriff's department and the fire department. A couple of things that were discussed in the last meeting that I just thought I would throw notes in there for is, um, as of the pay classification time, the sheriff's department recruits were paid $39,000 while they were training at the academies. Once they completed the academy, they were increased to 42.5. The fire department recruits do begin at 42.5 because that was the bottom of their scale. When we created the scales, we didn't, we didn't even think of recruits. We didn't realize we were going to be at that point that quickly. And even though they start at 42.5, they also sign a three-year service agreement commitment to the county with incremental values that they would have to pay back if they left employment with the county to compensate us for the money we've invested in their training.
What if they're terminated for cause?
If they're terminated for cause, then they owe, there's a clause in that agreement as well, but they owe us the money back incrementally. Again, how much service they put in for that.
So do the, uh, deputy sheriffs also sign something, uh, for all their train?
That I'm aware of.
They don't.
So that's just kind of one of those differences, um, to be aware of. And, um, so maybe, um, yes, we had the, there were five, um, fire department employees and 14 sheriff's deputy, um, or sheriff's department employees who received that increase to bring them up to the new minimums when we adopted those scales because our scales for first responders were well below what the surrounding regions were. And I know they've all continued to escalate quickly.
The contract for the, uh, recruit firefighters, let's say they go to the academy for two months and they drop out. Is that prorated or do they have to pay a total amount?
No, it, it's prorated. It's, um, it's stated on their, in, in their agreement incrementally what they would owe. And if they've only, you know, go two months, then they pay back the value.
It's broken down into months or?
It's, I, I can't remember the exact language. I know that they've completed the EMS portion, so that was like the first six weeks. So if they had not made it through that, they would have owed us for that, that program. So I hope that answers your, um, comparison for fire and sheriff.
It, it very much does, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Turner, I guess you close it out here?
So, included in your packet tonight is administration department budget request for FY 2023 along with any other information provided by the department. As I summarize the request, I will note significant increases or decrease info. All salary requests for staffing includes a 1.5 COLA and 2% in merit increase unless otherwise noted. Vacation payout program amounts have also been added for any anticipated usage. Um, when you're looking through each department's, uh, the line items too, you'll also see in 21, an actual where we have a line item that's called leave payout. So what happened, um, in 21, we started actually, well, we did have to pay someone out for retirement or whatever, the reason for, um, they're, um, leaving the county. We started tracking that because what happens is we needed to see, how does that impact our budget? Because those amounts are not budgeted. There's no way for us to anticipate when somebody is going to decide to leave and we have to pay out these vacation payouts, especially for someone who's been here for many, many years. So in 21, you will see a payout, leave payout. Um, and I, that, that's, uh, good information when you're kind of looking at that to see, okay, look what it costs for when someone retired from the sheriff, all that vacation that we had to pay out or from whatever department, even the treasurer's office when someone had left. But that's the other reason why the vacation payout is actually going to kind of help us because vacation payouts is really going to be the benefit to the people that have been here a long time and they're accruing so much time. It's hard for them to even use it and keep doing the, you know, the job they have. So that's something when we're talking about this vacation payout program to kind of keep that in mind that leave out pay, leave payout, I, for the sheriff's office, I think we have budgeted something this year for him because he anticipates some retirement somewhere. So we were able to kind of do some kind of calculation for that. But other than that, it's really hard for us to, you know, determine what kind of payout we're going to have. Prior years, it just lumped into the salary payout. There was no way of identifying that if somebody's salary went, you know, they exceeded their budget, other than it just went up. Now we actually have separate line items that actually can identify that for you. So you see, uh, the salary increase for this reason, though. They went above the budget. And what we tried to do with last year, we did a budget adjustment that actually we offset some revenues that we actually had that we didn't anticipate to cover those leave payouts. And that's, that's all we did. So we were able to do that last year and still add to our honest money fund balance too. Um, so we'll start off with the board supervisors. Um, your budget reflects an increase of 3,848. The travel for convention and education has been increased by $3,000. And the wireless service for the iPads provided to the board members has increased. Are there any questions about the board's budget?
Of course. Did we use up the monies from the travel before? Is that why we're adding?
No, um, we've added that inter, that the additional amount because we figured that the chairman is probably gonna, we, we figured there was going to be additional training and conventions that you guys would like to go to. And we wanted to put it there and then let you guys make that cut if you would like.
There's plenty of opportunities to attend, but I know those of you that work, it's very difficult.
It is, it is. And especially right now.
Part of that was probably, was probably NACO, wasn't it?
Uh, I only, well, when I attended the, the NACO conference in National Harbor last year, I only asked for the registration fee and parking.
That was like, what, a one week? It was a long kind of.
Three, uh, three days.
Three days.
Over a weekend, so. Didn't stay there, stayed in my
That you commuted to.
Stayed in my other home.
Again, these are not the county administration's recommendations. These are what we're presenting.
But the next, the next NACO conference is in Colorado. I don't, do not anticipate being able to go to Colorado for a week, so would love to, but it doesn't make sense.
Right. I don't want to get bogged down over that. Um, I think, I think it, it makes sense to, to probably budget for it. We don't know what these conferences are going to cost also. We don't know if the cost of ACO is going to level or increase since they're having to move things around and, and, uh, obviously costs in general going up. So it probably makes sense to give a little bit of a cushion there.
Sure.
Any other questions about the board?
Will we do a merit increase?
Fortunately, I did not include that.
You, you're low. I'm something I can say. In fact, I'm making less than I do, I like to do the health insurance. I need to go on strike. My silent protest and missing December meeting.
Okay, so we'll move on to the county administrator's office. The county administrator's office reflects an increase of 254,531. Significant changes include salaries for the county administrator and deputy county administrator for FY 22 have been adjusted and reflect the, in, in the increase for FY 23. A summer intern has been requested for a part-time salary cost. Reassessment costs reflect in FY 23 for contractor and BOE hearings. Travel for education has increased to include costs for participation in Weldon Cooper's Senior Executive Institute Program by the Deputy County Administrator. Are there any questions about county administrator?
The, uh, summer intern is new, correct?
Yes.
And where would they work? For the administrator or?
Yes, under the, both, uh, the deputy and the county administrator.
And would, yes, I hope it ain't hitting a long list, but what are the summer requirements? College, they're in college? Getting ready to attend college?
Natasha, as I would, I'd anticipate it would be continuing, uh, education for someone who was in political science, public administrations, might be looking at a career in, uh, in government. There's numerous, uh, opportunities for them to, to work in really any office, uh, in the admin building. Again, these are not, uh, these are not ready for recommendation at this point, but they're, they're thoughts on paper at this moment. We have to see if the funding would even be, uh, would be there for that, but I just wanted the board to know that that's kind of what I, I've always tried to do once a year, uh, provide an opportunity for a young, uh, a young intern who, uh, who is advocating a career in, in government and, uh, they certainly can provide valuable services throughout the summer. They would work, uh, from, I guess, uh, maybe June, uh, through August, uh, twenty, twenty hours.
Early August, probably. Cause you'd be going back to college. I, I think it's a good idea. I, I think with mo, a lot of the stuff we're looking at also.
No, honestly.
When we get down to that budget, it, it's going to be a tough.
That would be, that would be a first cut if, uh, if things don't work out.
I, I think it's a good idea to entice new employees, keep them in account.
Any other questions for county administrator? Okay, we'll talk about the financial services reflects a decrease based on creating a human resources department budget separate from final, financial services. And other than the merit and the COLA, we pretty much have stayed the same. Any questions?
Clarification, when you say merit, it sounds like you're saying across the board.
No. So we're anticipating, we're
Those that demonstrate.
It is going to be based on scoring of the performance evaluation, but we're budgeting a 2% just, you know, that best, you know, worst, best case scenario, I guess, is that the staff would, is going to meet that 2%.
Do we have an evaluation poll for employees?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Like I've ever seen.
I guess Nita has one that, that we, it's consistent. All department heads have to use the same, that performance evaluation scoring.
Those that, that will not receive it for whatever reason, are they giving criteria to, to work on what they need to?
Exactly. There are goals and, uh, they're, if, if they're scoring low, we ask that they discuss that with the staff member. Well, you know, what do, what do they want them to improve on? Yes.
Do you know how many other counties have this? Cause like I said, the state, I've been there 32 years and we've always talked about it, but it's never been funded, so. I mean, how many other counties actually fund this? I don't.
For merit and COLA? I think most, that's, that's how most of them base their increases, is definitely by merit.
Like I said, as we've had that for the state, I've been there 32 years and our evaluation means absolutely nothing for the last 32 years.
We've done it before here that too. We've done a, a COLA plus merit before.
So COLA is, is short for cost of living.
Right.
Yeah.
And everyone.
So, uh, I don't know, we used to have a formula that we, you know, was all contractual.
2%.
Yeah.
Didn't even cover the cost of the health insurance increase, but.
But anyway.
One of the state is currently debating two proposals right now. One coming out of the senate, which is 5% each year over the biennium. And then one that came out of the house, which is 4% each year of the biennium and, and by any, 1% bonus at the end of each year, uh, for state-supported employees is currently what's on the table. So the states, the state employees, they're either going to get 8% of the biennium plus bonus or 10% over the, in total. And that's not even an accurate number. 5% each year is different than 10%, but nonetheless, you give a point. So that's, that was on the table for the state right now.
Only, you said that they would get one of the others, but it's on the table.
Right. Well, I mean, you have two very different budgets that are in conference right now, so God knows what they'll come up with, but, uh, I, I would expect that, you know, one of those two or a hybrid of it will end up in there. I don't think they'll go probably lower than the house was able to put together.
Okay, so we'll move on to human resources department. Includes cost for HR payroll manager salary and a new full-time position to assist with payroll, payroll processing. We also have the new system NeoGov that, uh, is a $30,000 cost for the human resources department, which will also, right now, we do have that form that you were talking about, Mr. Garber, for the, um, evaluation. But NeoGov is actually, once we get into that, there will actually be even standard things that we can use for performance evaluation and, you know, guidance and things like that. It also will help with the sheriff's office, um, um, fire and EMS, um, posting jobs in a specific place. So, um, we've already started using it. Um, we've been using it maybe two or three months now, January.
It'll kind of.
So it's new and we're, we're working through it.
It'll take a lot of the human factor out of it.
Yes, yes.
It's probably a good thing.
Uh, yeah, this, uh, consistent information provided and things like that, yeah.
So that was a one-time cost that's already been sunk, the 30,000 for them?
No, that's the annual fee on it.
Wow.
We have, yeah, this year we have covered some of it.
I have seen San and Anderson, you know, like 200,000 on one line. I, why do we have legal here for a thousand?
So why we have that for her is when we have someone that, um, we have to get Versa involved in, uh, our insurance company, and they have to come to actually represent at a hearing.
And we, we paid for that?
Yes, we have, we, we received it. We have a deductible for it, yes. It's the grievance. It's when we have to support our grievance policies.
So we didn't have anything in there before this year?
Correct. Any other questions for human resources?
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, it is going to be my recommendation that, uh, the human resources officer be an independent, department, head an independent department and grant off from, uh, what was previously in finance and report to the county administrator.
For reports to you, okay.
Or do you have any questions for Nita? Or do you have any questions for Nita?
That's probably a good thing also.
So our next is information technology. Reflects an increase of one hundred and twelve thousand two hundred forty-five. Significant changes include request for a new full-time position, IT specialist. Costs of an annual telephone maintenance moved from general properties to IT. Additional funds needed for education. Increase to network supplies to cover costs of firewalls and switches at the animal shelter and station one. And if you have any questions, Mr. Wolf is here and will be happy to answer any.
And I know they're busy all the time, but this, didn't we just add a full-time position?
We, we added a full-time position in twenty-two's budget. And yeah, so that position was already there.
What enhancements are we going to see with regards to information security?
First one?
What, with the increase in budget, what, and, and new personnel, what could we expect to see in terms of information security?
Okay, good, great question. So, um, being, bringing on Benjamin Shoemaker has allowed us to pull back some of the things that Code Blue, who's our third-party vendor, has been doing for us. Uh, having Benjamin here to allow us to put in our own firewalls that are not managed by a third-party company. So a lot of those funds will come away from Code Blue and then go towards the new firewalls, uh, systems like that. We're also looking to bring on a new, uh, patch management, uh, updates, antivirus, cybersecurity company, uh, or vendor, so to speak, that Benjamin is very familiar with and can operate here out of the county. So we'll actually be able to manage it ourselves rather than, um, relying on another company. That also puts us more in compliance with state regulations for the general registrar. Cause right now, the way it is, even though Code Blue's a reputable company, they can also remote into anybody's computer at any given time to assist us, and it's an open port that is not looked on very.
Best practices.
Correct.
Okay.
Do, do we expect an offset in spending on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we know about how much?
We're pulling back thirteen. Um, I believe at the end of the day, it was a hundred and eighty dollars a month more. I can grab the numbers exactly, but it was right around two thousand, just over two thousand dollars annually for us to do that interim.
A saving?
Uh, no increase.
An increase, definitely.
With the new equipment as well as the new product. Now, next year won't be as much because we won't need to buy the new firewalls and the equipment. We'll already have that.
Did you go over the telephone system? I mean, I think you've spoken to me about it, but I know we just got this one two or three years ago, but the new system will be more voiceover internet works.
Actually, the current system we have has been here seven years.
That long?
Correct. Um, from what I understand and looking back on notes, it's been here, uh, seven years. The new system would be more voiceover. I mean, this is a voiceover IP, but it's converted. We still, we have copper lines coming in from Verizon. That's getting ready to go by the wayside. Um, they haven't told us a date yet, but it won't be long before they stop supporting copper lines. Um, so the new system would not only allow for cloud hosting, uh, be less equipment here for us. It'll basically be the phones and we'll be able to ride, uh, Segra's fiber line coming in. It'll power through that. It'll also give people more ability to have, if, if they choose to have it go to their cell phones, you can actually make a phone call. One thing we noticed, uh, during COVID, hopefully we don't go back to this, but some people that were trying to work from home or actually working from home, if they needed to make a phone call back to a citizen, they would have to use their cell phones. Giving out their personal cellphone was not best practice either. So with this new system that would allow for us to have an app on our cell, even a personal cellphone, if they choose to use their personal one, uh, and it ties, it looks like it's calling from their desktop.
Mr. Wolf, what always bothers me about everything over IP? What happens when that farmer drags a line and services are cut? What's, what's your failsafe?
Right now, we only have one line coming in, uh, which is Segra. Uh, Mr. Hudson's and I has have, have had conversation, wants all points, uh, puts fiber down into county. Hopefully they're coming through this area. We would like to utilize them, uh, either as a backup or depends on how, you know, conversations go. We could use them as the primary. We pay a very pretty penny for Segra right now, um, and I would love another option to be able to go away from that, so.
What was the other?
We don't have another, oh, uh, all points broadband, I'm sorry. With this, uh, initiative that they're putting in.
I'm having more trouble with these other companies cutting the line.
Right, whenever they were, Verizon was bringing the next gen nine-one-one line in, they cut Segra twice on Route thirty and they cut our fiber connection over to the animal shelter, which is now back in place. It took a long time, but.
Very good.
And is that in there?
Pardon?
The new, uh.
For the animal shelter?
I'm old school, I was getting ready to say T-bone, but I know it's not a fiber.
It is a fiber line.
Coming in.
Pardon me?
For the nine-one-one that they're all.
They are in place, they are not active. Um, we're having bi-weekly meetings with, with them. Uh, Loretta Collier over the sheriff's office is spearheading those, uh, conversations. Right now, it's kind of wait, AT&T is actually who's powering this, uh, initiative, even though it's Verizon that pulled the lines. I don't understand, but.
One thing I think I heard last week from Chair Wolf, we, our text to nine-one-one is fully operational, correct?
Right.
Cause that was a NACO, uh, item that we cover just about every, every month in our telecons. Urging communities to get that, get that moving as quickly as possible. It's good to know we're, we're there.
Yes, sir.
So. Maybe there's something the Stratscraps have put on their website is let people know that we, that you can text when you have an emergency where you don't want voice, that, uh, we can text to nine-one-one. Thank you, sure.
Mr. Chairman, uh, ditto to this as well. It would be my recommendation that, uh, IP becomes its own department and, uh, it will be taken from finance and report to the county administrator.
So let's move on to fire and EMS. Fire and EMS department reflects an increase of two hundred and eight thousand three hundred ninety-two. Seven new hires were hired in FY twenty-two utilizing ARPA funds. The FY twenty-three budget reflects the salaries and benefits for the new hires. ARPA would fund these costs once again in FY twenty-three, which reduces the general fund cost by four hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. And if you have any questions, she preaches here to respond.
With our next tranche anticipated in June, July, will that help this situation or do we already, do we have identified that already?
We've identified most of it.
And I'll present that later in the evening to the on-call.
Okay. Any questions, Sean? That's a lot of, lot of numbers.
The, uh, academy that needs to be adjusted. That would be seventy-eight thousand five hundred. Had we appropriated, uh, funding for the other ones that we were hoping to get, uh, through the safer grant?
That's right, so last, yeah, we haven't used that, that money, yeah, correct. And with the safer grant, what we intend to do is we still intend to apply for the safer grant, but we're not, it's not part of the budget presentation currently. If we do, if we are, we are awarded that, we'll come back to the board and ask for a budget amendment.
That's all.
Okay, building inspections.
All right. Building inspection department, no significant budget changes are planned for FY twenty-three. The change in budget reflects the across-the-board COLA and merit increase and increase in the health insurance due to increase in participation in the program.
Any questions, Sean? Moving on.
General properties, no significant change, budget changes other than the COLA and the merit.
I know there's been a lot of, uh, activity around the historical and courthouse and museum. Level funding. Any anticipated that the roof repairs, is that?
Well, we've got a capital line for all county roof repair. That's where, that's where the big-ticket items we typically have, uh, for deferred maintenance, that'd be roofing, HVAC systems. The only thing else anticipated that we know with historic society would be possibly, uh, something about water dampness, especially the museum and basement. And in my knowledge, we've got a unused capital appropriation from years past. We haven't brought forward, uh, possibly put in some French drain through some sort of remediation.
That's an asset that we have to focus.
Understood.
Okay. General.
All right, so then the administration of Parks and Recreation Department. This department is paid from the general fund. She has a separate fund for her programs. So when we're looking at this, keep in mind what the budget in front of you for admin of Parks and Recreation is paid from the general fund. Um, significant changes include salary and benefits for recreation special, recu, recreation specialists moved from the Park and Recreation Program Fund into the general fund. Outdoor speaker and projection, projector system under other operating supplies was moved from capital improvement plan. That's for ten thousand. And Kayla's here, do you have any questions?
Oh, how successful was that?
What was that?
The, uh, the movie, what did, what did you call it?
Movies and music?
Yeah. I know with COVID and everything.
It was right in the midst of COVID, COVID, um, October twenty-twenty-two, so it definitely wasn't as successful as we had hoped. Um, we do plan to continue to try it as things are getting back to normal. People are getting out and doing things again, so we do think it'll get better.
So moving that position out of the program funds is, is what we're doing. Um, is that, had that position typically been covered through program funds or do we just have it in that fund and?
It was, we have fund balance in that fund and if we were able to actually move, use that fund balance, but we no longer have a fund balance to help these.
So it is, it is actual general fund increase? I just see that, that just a move from one to the other, okay.
Cause the next one is gonna be your Parks and Recreation Program Funds. Um, it includes several new programs with revenues covering the expenditures for all programs. Um, and we, I, I provided a summary of, you know, the, the revenues expenses, expenses. Um, also Kayla has provided some narratives. She's provided, uh, the board with the, you know, the costs for each program also. And if you have any questions about that, she will be more than happy and I have your little summary here for you too. Currently, we still are supporting a part-time salary with Fund five-oh-three, too.
And I asked last year, I don't see it again this year, cat training?
No cat training yet. If you could find me an instructor, I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next is planning the zoning department reflects a decrease overall for FY twenty-three. Significant changes include fully staffed in FY twenty-three, no longer utilizing contract labor. Additional costs added for property maintenance for demolition of structures, removal of junk cars, weeds, trash and debris removal to enforce abatement of violation, Article three, section fourteen dash one-four-one and fourteen dash one-four-two. If you have any questions regarding that budget, Sherry's here to address those.
I know there's been a lot of activity with cleaning up of vehicles and whatnot. Uh, where would you, what do you feel like we're at as far as, have you identified everything that there is?
Well, it's a daily, um, task to, to do that, but we do have several buildings that do need to be demolished. Um, and we have tried to get the owner to do it. Some of them are bank-owned, some of them are foreclosures that nobody's, uh, taking claim to. Um, so we've had difficulty getting these demolished. Um, same thing with trash and debris. We're working on that. We've got some that are gonna be non-compliant with this. We, we need to have the money to pay the contractors to do the work. Um, and then, of course, the property owner or the bank would be billed, um, for this work. And then if they don't pay, then of course, liens will be placed against the property. So we may or may not recuperate money right away, just depending. And we've been pretty successful getting a lot of stuff cleaned. I mean, uh, I, I don't wanna give out certain addresses, but there's one that's been pretty bad on thirty. And, uh, we've been in contact with the bank and they are working on it to clean it up and, and made a little progress and.
It was activity yesterday, isn't it?
Do, do the liens have any, uh, interest factor involved in?
I'm not sure.
It costs thirty, forty thousand dollars to, uh, demolish a building and they won't pay, and we have to wait until the sale of the property or whatever. It might be ten years down the road. It's no way to recover. A lien is a lien for whatever the face value of.
That's the way the system works. Very slow.
If, if a lien is placed on a property and it's not on payment after a certain time, can it be sold to recover the lien? You can?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all.
That's a decision made by the project.
Thank you. Curious about one section over in the commerce park, just all those cars over there, maybe they're not, I mean, like, so we've been told different things. They're not supposedly supposed to be for sale, but like I said, I've never seen any of them move, so is that not in the same category as this particular thing?
Some of them are because not all of them are on the import property. They seem to.
On those outlets.
They do, um, and that person I do notify, but every time I notify him, he makes sure they get moved off. However, they keep coming back. You know, six months later, you go back out there and they're there.
Is it any, anything in the, in the ordinance, any length of time that a particular vehicle can be studied at a establishment?
This is something that we will be bringing to you to change. Right now, it's a thirty-day, um, courtesy letter and then a violation letter. Um, and then by that time, and another letter, it's ninety days. And not so much as with the junk cars, but when you have the summertime and you have weeds, three months of the summer heat and rain here and there, you've got five-foot weeds. That's way too long.
If they're in violation, are they found per vehicle or are they, if it's just a bunch of them sitting there, they are. If they're in violation, are they found per vehicle or are they, if it's just a bunch of them sitting there, they're found, say, a hundred dollars or whatever for the whole lot?
We've had a few that I've taken to court and of course, it is up to the judge. But usually it's, you know, a thousand dollars per day, that type of thing for violation. So whether they lump them together or the, the judge wants to just do a one, one per day violation.
Okay, that's a thousand miles away from the budget. Thank you.
Yeah, real quick, Sherry, I'm sorry, I'm just trying, I was, I was thinking I was missing in the narrative here, but the, the way that the, the salary field is structured here, you've got a sixty-three thousand dollar increase in salaries and wages, but I don't see a justification line. And I also don't see where, if, if we've got the, you know, the manager wages up here where we budgeted for any adjustments.
Are you talking about how the, the salaries for contract labor is actually?
I'm just talking right at the top, line eleven hundred, eleven thirty.
Right. What's the question?
So you have a sixty-three thousand dollar increase on line eleven thirty, but I don't see a corresponding justification line in the narrative or, or in the, the, the narrative at the front. And again, nor on the line eleven hundred, do I see the salary adjustment that we budgeted in other departments for increases.
Yeah, that is, it's because if, yeah, we, we were using contract labor last year, we were not fully staffed for that seventy-nine thousand. So that's why that, we've hired two positions since then. They were already positions that we had in the department, they had just been vacant. But over the past, probably now seven or eight months, we've hired back our ENS property maintenance person and zoning administrator. And then, of course, we have a, we have a Levarnato working as our secretary and we now have a full-time secretary.
So I just didn't see it corresponding.
With zero.
Just to kind of, yeah, let us know what that.
So I assume in twenty twenty-one, it was, the office was fully staffed, I would imagine, because they were at like one seventy-five, two forty-three. And now we're at one.
I don't think he had an ENS at that time.
Well, right, and I don't think Sherry was the manager at the time either, so she would have moved out of that salary pool into, yeah, into the manager pool, but then again, on the line eleven hundred, everybody else, we've got budgeted for, you know, COLA and merit or whatever, we don't have that there.
Yeah, that's what it is, that's exactly what it is. And last for the departments is water and sewer fund budget request reflects an increase of ninety thousand one hundred twenty-six. Significant changes include requests for a full-time position, a meter tech locator, and also transfer from fund, the water and sewer funds to our capital fund for the purpose of, purpose of replacement of high mileage utility vehicle, and that's going to be forty-five thousand dollars. And Josh is here, if you have any questions.
Everybody's flipping pages.
Yeah, so, so what page, what page are we looking at?
Yeah, I just added the water and sewer tonight, we just brought that in tonight.
I was just looking all the revenue pages. Because remember, this, this department is funded with, it's unfunded.
Yeah, it's not the general fund tax fare dollars. And if you notice, Josh added that hydrant meter usage, she now charges a rent for that to the contractors, we didn't have that before, so.
Right, ARPA. Coming down the home stretch.
So included in the packet was the ARPA budget. And what we wanted you to be able to see is what we plan on using ARPA funds for during twenty twenty-three. Expenditures for FY twenty-three, that's what the, you'll see in column, well, FY twenty-three total one point five million. For administration, where we are intending to use twenty-eight thousand for Nano Shield and additional PPE needs and twenty thousand for coverage of full-time staff missed during the COVID. Mr. Ashcraft had asked me about that earlier today, so currently what we're doing is we budgeted if any of our staff throughout the county sheriff's office, fire and EMS administration, if they are having to miss time because of COVID for, they have COVID, they're having to miss it because someone, for whatever reason, COVID is the reason they're not here. We're not asking them right, right now to use sick time or vacation time, up to eighty hours. Eighty hours they're allotted, that is just something that we inherited when the pandemic first started. And we're still, that is still rolling forward though, so if you did use, you know, twenty hours a year ago, that is still part of the COVID rollover, what we're accounting for that too. So the next item on ARPA is fire and EMS, as we talked about earlier, it's four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars towards hiring another seven full-time employees. They just, they are now here as of January twenty twenty-two. Regional animal shelter, four hundred, four thousand eight hundred seventy-five for PPE, five hundred for pet food pantry, eight hundred thirty-four for community eviction support. And the last one is broadband, we're allocating one million dollars of ARPA money for the broadband project in FY twenty-three.
This is three-year money, two-year, three-year?
Up until FY twenty-five. So that, it will run from, it runs March third, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So not all the way through twenty-five. And as, we still have forty-five thousand that we have not allocated of the total amount that we will receive also.
If allocations become obsolete, you know, seeing that we have some of this, you know, sick time and et cetera, still budgeted out to FY twenty twenty-five and obviously we're not using it for that purpose at that point in time.
We will come to you.
We can reallocate.
Yes, definitely, exactly, it, you know, at the time when we, we even presented this, and I think this was back in September, maybe when we presented it, we didn't know where.
Who knew, right?
COVID was going to go this winter and so it, yeah, we do have some funds in there that will probably, probably need to be reallocated, yes.
The other day, you had something in administration, it was for broadband initiative, two and a half millions, what's the difference in that one and this one?
So for the capital, we are using two million from ARPA in the capital plan, it does list that we're using two million total from ARPA. And then two twenty-five from the EDAs roll forward and then two seventy-five from the infrastructure capital roll forward.
For total of?
Two and a half, yeah.
But this is just the ARPA portion of the funding for that.
And it's listed in the capital improvement as a funding source, ARPA is, yeah.
No questions, just happy we were able to use it to get broadband.
Yeah.
Even happier once we have it.
It'll be a few unhappy people, I'm sure.
Yeah, always.
Starlink.
Are you going to be one of them, Stuart?
I'm thinking probably so. I don't think, I'm like two thousand feet, well, yeah, well, they said they were going to run it free, so, to your house regardless of the distance.
They'll cover, if they come up infield.
It's going to be a long run, two thousand feet, that'll be good enough.
Just, just while we're talking about broadband, Atlantic, now Breeze Line has a contract with the FCC, they're a little slower, but they do have a contract to support pretty much the rest of the county. So we're working on that feverishly. Okay. Now the.
Completing West one?
No, you already got Cox.
I also looked at Breeze Lines advertised prices and I wish mine was.
That's probably an introductory offer, it's probably going up.
But just remember, they don't support TV or, well, they will support phone and broadband, but they're not supporting.
Well, that's all points, but Breeze Line does. That's all points, but Breeze Line does.
I'm, I'm sorry, yes. It's a little different. In the favorite part, how can we reduce taxes?
Yes. At the request of the county administrator, several tax rate reduction scenarios are included into the packet tonight. Real estate tax reduction for one cent, one and a half cents and two cents are included along with projected shift in revenues for each reduction. Also included is the median value of, of owner occupied housing unit from the US Census Bureau. How the different reductions would potentially affect homeowners is reflected in that document. And then personal property tax reduction for ten cent, fifteen cent and twenty cents are included along with the projected shift in revenues for each of those reductions.
Something, gentlemen, that's been floating around today, the group that was with me at the VACO supervisors conference last month of kind of a going around the barn, but what are we doing with personal property taxes and the increased value of used vehicles? So that's interesting and across Virginia, I'm sure. Do we really have, what are we going to do, are we going to adjust the PPTRE, PRA, or are we going to just flat?
So.
What's, what's our option?
Adjusting the PPTRA isn't really an option, we get what we get and that's, that's kind of it, you know, our options as, as that we have them for that is to either reduce the personal property rate as is presented here, or Ms. Funkowski, you'll recall, sent us an email a month or two ago that the commissioner of revenue organization is, is of the opinion that we could also reduce the, the percentage of the fair market value of the vehicle we actually tax. Right? Yeah.
Well, the problem with that is this is probably going to be a short-lived thing. Once we start, once you can go to a call lot and negotiate.
Well, right.
So do we want, do we want to get to a point where we will physically have to raise the personal property tax because of the drop in?
Well, right, and I think that was the point of, of what the commissioners put out there was that boards are going to be reticent to deal with it because once you lower a rate, it is very difficult to then go back politically and increase it if, if the used car market, you know, craters, and once there's a glut of cars, you know, out there in the next year or two, like people have predicted. And so that's a mechanism by which you could reduce the burden from what we think is a transient increase in value without reducing the rate. But then again, you're still left with, I think the biggest difference is, you know, advertising a, you know, an increased tax rate versus, you know, the way that you could do that, if, if, again, if the time comes that you need to, to adjust that. I, I'm almost reticent to do anything with it right now. Because again, we do think that it's going to be transient, it's going to be very difficult to get ourselves back into a positive revenue position when that market changes. And right now, I think everybody can look at that and identify that as a bubble market, I mean.
But if NADA is adjusted once a year.
They, I think that they lately have been doing it probably much more often, that maybe, maybe quarterly.
Well, I, I can, I can tell you just from recent experience that, you know, with the insurance companies use Edmonds and that's, that's on it, like right now. You know, I, I saw in, in the total valuation of my poor truck was a lot more than what I expected and more than what I paid for. So I think, I think it's being captured, I mean, we certainly saw it in the bills that we all got last year, that that value was being captured for sure.
My, my, I would favor the real estate reduction.
I think it benefits the most amount of, of people.
Because many people have a older car, they would see.
They might not even pay tax.
Exactly.
One of the first questions that the schools will ask when we talk tax reduction, how will that affect our funding for the schools? And gentlemen, I ran every scenario and it will not, we will still be able to fund what they need.
Well, right, the only way we can affect their funding, for the ways, instead of is actually adjust the rate that they collect, right? So. Which isn't what we're proposing, but.
So is it unusual to, plus this point eight four five, is that unusual, is that doable?
Your county's seventy-nine and a half. That's one off the top of my head.
I actually asked Mr. Ashcraft the same thing, though.
I mean, it's not, it's not the norm, but it is.
It's pretty precision budgeting.
He's good.
I think he likes to challenge me.
I think so.
This is good to look at, and, and I mean, I'd love to do all this, but I think we need to see where we're at.
Right, I want to look at where we are with, with the proposed, when we get there and see what we're giving up and, and because it's off tonight, again, there's a lot of need.
Yeah.
You know, and so.
Always been need though.
I'm always loving funded, but that's another thing, we're all assuming that everything's going to go up and we're going to pass it, so. I don't, well, I think that you're going to see that we're going to be making some, probably some tough decisions even at the current rate. You know, and I think you only make that harder if you commit to a, you know, two cent tax reduction at this point in time and, and the process, I think we need to get a little bit further along and see where we are.
But we asked to see this and it's good.
Yeah, yeah, no, this, 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 no. It'll be even better once we have, you know, what, what our expenditures look like and what, again, what those expenditures are comprised of especially.
What is that next opportunity, fourteen?
The next opportunity is for me to present you with a budget. That, I guess that's what I'm.
So you're, you're looking, so you are looking for a little bit of a consensus then?
You're looking for some God, so you can work the budget around.
We can, we can provide you with three budgets, but I don't think you want that.
Let me, let me, let me just, I, I think I'm making my point clear. I, I think with A, we're looking at an eight percent increase in revenue and that's great, but we're also looking at nearly eight percent inflation, all right, in that same timeframe, we're in a reassessment year. How do we want to position ourselves for when that comes through and what that means for revenue? Do we want to start shaving revenue now or later, do we want to see where we stand once the reassessments done and what that tax rate looks like and what we can do within the confines of that, of that new rate that we know is going to be drastically different than, than this one, much lower? So my, my position would be, I, I would not necessarily have an appetite for a reduction this year. You know, especially if we're only talking two cents, I mean, you look at what the impact of that is for seventeen, actually those forty-one bucks.
We, we originally, originally expressed some sentiment to equalize the rate.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're, we're still.
I've not changed my position on that, which makes me even more reticent to, to say that I think it's, it's a, it might idea to, to try to reduce this rate.
It's true, we might need that.
I'm very much in line, I think you could tell where I was going on that, I don't think it's a good year to do it. I mean, I, I loved it, but I just don't think it's a good year.
All I'm saying is that a lot of extra items have been brought up wishlist and like I said, Travis and I know we've had administrations in the past that have really outlandish.
Right, but remember Natasha's, when we were talking last time, one of the things that we discussed was where we are expenditure-wise. And with just requests, not with the recommended budget, but just with requests, at the current rates, we were, we were basically a million dollars short. So that's a lot of requests already that are out the window, keeping the rate the same.
Absolutely.
One thing we've not talked about is our slush fund.
It's not a slush fund.
I know.
Somebody kick him.
You're not cheap, boy.
But, but at the same time, we have discussed that, that was part of that capital projects presentation, we talked about where, where we stand from a, you know, a healthy reserve standpoint, from an excess reserve standpoint, and what can we use in that excessive reserve, I mean, we've not funded capital on the county side. you know, a healthy reserve standpoint, from an excess reserve standpoint, and what can we use in that excessive reserve? I mean, we've not funded capital on the county side in a while. Right, so, you know, we've got an opportunity to use some of that funding for purposes for which people would typically tell you are logical and good sound uses of that, which are, you know, one-time capital.
You said now we're at like twenty percent, but that is a little higher than what was recommended. But like I said, if we're gonna have to use some of the capital and they bring it down, do you know what it might bring it down? Do you have an expectation?
Uh, gosh, I don't, we'll still be within our, we'll still be within the twenty percent. I think we're gonna be at twenty-two percent.
Right, but that's still a little high. What is the, they said we should, the average?
Our financial policy is twenty percent.
Twenty, okay.
Twenty percent, and we will remain at twenty-two.
Right.
Okay, so it's still, okay.
So again, you wouldn't want to use that to offset a, a general fund recurring expenditure, because then, again, that just becomes more, you gotta make up.
If, if I understood Travis, what, what he said correctly, at the current rate, with everything that's being asked for in this budget, we would be one million dollars short if we threw everything, gave everything that everybody wanted, correct?
You gave, yes, exactly. Now, the county administrator's definitely got his red pen out already.
But you were forecasting one million, right? But we don't get all that crap. Right, it isn't part of that school?
Correct, you're right. So if we forecasted a little over a million for this fiscal year, there is going to be some kind of amount that would have to go probably to the split, for the restricted split levy fund, because, you know, the amount of tax revenues that came in were higher than what we actually appropriated to the school, so then that they would actually, they're entitled to those, that, that money. And that then, but it's been running about three hundred, four hundred thousand is usually what moves.
Right, but we haven't seen the school's request yet, at least I haven't. So you, I would imagine that you're basing that, you know, nine hundred thousand plus number just on what our revenues are looking like and what our requested expenditures are looking like, right?
The number I have for the school, I, I received from Stacy, and she's actually presented it to her board too, so we're in a solid state with the schools.
We're good there, so the short is on our side.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
So, yeah, so, so that, that lift is entirely on us.
And I'm just trying to remember everything. It's been a lot. Isn't the majority of the increases in sour, in benefits, would you say?
Um, well, there's, we have, you know, we have the regional jail that it went up quite a bit. I can actually, if you want, I can give you a quick summary too, to kind of give you guys a better idea of everything you've looked at over the last couple of weeks. To give you a better idea of, this is what everybody's asked for, and just a quick summary too. I'll send that to you guys.
It just seems like most of it's been reoccurring.
Yeah, and I, I have the outside agencies budget summary, and we, we forgot to put that in at the very beginning of the meeting to, so that I would go over that with you. But I can send that to, oh, actually, it's in your, it's in your packet. I just didn't go over it with you and kind of outline some of the things.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on to supervisor's request, Mr. Green, and I think it's your turn. Start up.
Oh, that's, but, no, this is just works, I know. Budgets, I don't know. Like I said, we have that. She, she, she was talking about this sort of updates, everything, that'd be good for me, so.
Yeah, I would like to see that also, and I'm still kind of hanging in the balance here. But look forward to seeing the budget presentation and what Mr. Ashcraft comes up with.
Mr. Hudson.
You'll bring that magic pencil, I'm sure.
No, it's a magic wand. It's a magic wand, Bill.
I really don't have a whole lot, but I was informed a little earlier about Mr. Garber, and maybe he wants to, I think we ought to honor a captain here.
Well, I, I already, I already went out there and shook his hand.
Okay, for rescue.
Scott Hamilton, he's on the front page of the Country Courier.
How many people own a dry suit?
Rescuing a
I have a wet suit, but.
Animal in distress.
A cat?
Oh, it was a dog. He went in the river and I think it said you, you swam a hundred yards in, in cold water.
Wow.
Yeah.
Why didn't he use that?
Good for you.
Hard to get it up there. Scott's faster than any boat anyway.
That's really all I had in there.
Mr. Muskowski.
We've got, you know, like I've said before, we're everybody's not gonna be happy. There's no way, there's no way to do it with the part of it that we have, but we'll do the best that we can, what we've got.
Yeah.
That's all right.
We're estimating towards the conclusion, sir.
Oh, just wrap.
That's my request.
Wrap it up. I just want to reiterate that this has been the most transparent, comprehensive, top-to-bottom review, I think, in my exposure here in the last four years. Again, kudos to the staff, Mr. Ashcraft, Mr. Hudson's, department heads, people that input, thank you so much. And with entertain a motion to convene, I know Travis is all over.
Mr. Chair, I move a motion to convene and close meeting in accordance with Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia to consider a personal matter involving the salary of specific public employees.
Second.
Properly motion, second, Ms. Branch.
Aye.
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 Thank you. I make a move to reconvene in open session.
Second.
Motion seconded, Ms. Branch.
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, a move that we approve S R one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Branch.
Aye.
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 With the German, Mr. German.
Second, second.
Unanimous, I will say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good night, gentlemen.
Bye.